I didn't either, and I know Jeff said we were gonna, and then Kent sent us what they had agreed upon. I was surprised not to see it in my packet.
I called Carrie last Thursday after I got the call from Kent Secrass. And Carrie said you're gonna have in your packet probably the one that Roma signed at their last meeting.
Yeah.
Yeah, I didn't see it.
I didn't get either of them. And Jeff had said we were gonna get both, but for some reason...
I think we got one. I'm pretty sure we did.
Well, they're all agreeing to it. I don't really...
Yeah, yeah, me too. I just was surprised, so...
But we did get the one from Roma in there.
We're being converged upon right here.
Yes.
Welcome. Nice to have so many guests. Thanks for coming today.
Most of them.
Well, good afternoon. I'm Sarah Boyle. I'm the Director of the Lincoln High Hospital Human Services Department. And today, we wanted to visit with you about Project Success. Each year, I try to bring some collaboration. We have a joint collaboration, city-county, in front of the city council to make you aware of it. Last year, it was Operation To Bean Point. And we actually have our gang coordinator who wanted to come watch. Matt is here. So, he will be here observing this. But first, let me introduce the people that are part of this project and that make this happen. Becky Steiner with my office. She's the Juvenile Justice Coordinator. Alicia Henderson with the County Attorney's Office. Jason Stilly with Lincoln Police Department. And then, of course, you all know the new chief in town, right? So, just to kind of give you an overview of human services, I don't come very often. So, just to make sure that you're aware of what our office does, we have three main functions. The first one is General Assistance, which does not involve the city at all. That is 100% county-funded. We are located over at Traver Hall, so I have a group of employees here in the city-county building. And then also over at Traver Hall where General Assistance is located at. Second thing is the Joint Budget Committee. And both Larryon and Cindy are part of that committee and part of overseeing those funds. 1.2 million in combined city and county tax funding goes into the Joint Budget Committee. This committee funds human services agencies in the community who, without city-county funding, they wouldn't be in existence. We primarily serve those entities where there's a gap of funding between state funding, federal funding. They need a little additional funding to maintain. Some of those services are CenterPoint, Street Outreach, Friendship Home. We funded them, and many others, too. And then, we also oversee Keno funds. About 5% of Keno funds come through our office. And those filter back into the community for prevention types of activities. And then, lastly, and involved with this project is the juvenile justice component of our office. And in juvenile justice, we have about half a million from county funds that we distribute out to direct services. And then, we receive about a half a million in federal funds. And then, 1.5 million in state funding. One of the requirements of the 1.5 million that we receive in state funding is to have an ongoing, what they call disproportionate minority contact committee. And so, what this committee does is it goes through and it looks at various system points. So, for example, we have the arrest system point, which directly involves Project Success. But then, it also looks at diversion. It looks at petitions. It looks at the number, and we're talking juveniles, the number of kids that go into secure detention or to any out-of-home placement. And it challenges the committee to see, is there disproportionality? And if there is disproportionality, is there disproportionality because of disparity? Is disparity happening within our system? And when you really think about that question, this committee is probably one of the most challenging committees I've ever been involved in. It's talking about two different, really uncomfortable things. It's talking about parents who perceive that their kids are being treated unfairly. And it's talking about race. And it's an open committee, and it meets quarterly right now. People that are on it are all of the individuals sitting here, all of these agencies. We also have involvement from the judiciary, from Health and Human Services, and then various community agencies, all of our cultural agencies. And then, we've also had interested parents and consumers who've showed up at meetings. So, getting back to the disparity. When disparity occurs in your system, it can happen one of two ways. It can happen internally through staff. And that's where you look at things like implicit bias might come into play, schemas from maybe past history, past historical events that you've experienced, or preconceived notions, or racism, which we hope is not one of the factors. It can also happen externally or through an organization, through policies. So, for example, when we look at that, one of the things that people are most familiar with is the '90s, the war on drugs, what happened with crack versus cocaine, right? The sentencing was harsher for those individuals who were busted for crack. Well, we know who the consumers were primarily of crack versus cocaine. So, we saw an influx of African-Americans going into our penal system. More down at the juvenile level, those policies might look like warrants. When we have warrants go out on kids, are we considering factors that a lot of our immigrant and refugee populations have a mobility rate a lot higher than individuals who have been here for a while? So, in that case, we have a program where we actually go out and we try to find these individuals. We work with advocates in the community who just by word of mouth know where maybe individuals have relocated to. It also looks at policies that may be for kids coming into juvenile detention. If we have a parent who is able, and at home, able to supervise their kid when they're brought into detention, then we are more apt to release them. What does that do, then, to immigrant and refugee families who maybe are working second shift, and they don't have that supervision at home? So, really looking at those types of policies, those types of things within our system that may impact that disproportionality rate. So, that's where Project Success comes into play. And we started really looking at the arrest rate and looking into what is causing our arrest rate to look the way it looks. And last time, we looked at that, and I know that Captain Stilly's gonna talk a little bit more about this, but there was disproportionality there. And so, really looking to see where those numbers were coming from. Do you want to talk more about that?
Sure. So, to back up, Project Success really had, it was born when we initially, the members of the Disproportionate Minority Contact Committee went to Georgetown University, and we attended a week-long certificate program there at Georgetown. And the certificate program looked at the three different things like Sarah talked about. One of them is the over-representation of youth of color in the juvenile justice system. The next one is disparate treatment of youth in the juvenile justice system. So, that would be kids of color being treated a lot differently than their white counterparts. And then, also unnecessary entry and movement deeper into the juvenile justice system. So, we had the opportunity to look at a variety of policies and procedures that have been tried around the country and listen to the policymakers and some of the people that advocated best practices. And one of the people that really I identified with was a gentleman by the name of Kevin Bethel. He is a deputy commissioner for the Philadelphia Police Department. And they talked about their impact on disproportionate minority contact there within the school system in Philadelphia. There, they have school resource officers, and they had sort of carte blanche to do whatever they wanted in the school system. And what they decided to look at was when they ran their numbers, what does our racial makeup look like in the schools? And what does the arrest data show? And they had a disproportionate amount of kids of color that were arrested, representative, not representative of their representation in the population. So, the next thing they looked at is what are those offenses they're arresting these kids at or for? And one of them was disturbances. One of them was assaults. They also looked at user amounts of marijuana, and then also some weapons offenses. So, what they came up with was, we don't know exactly, to get to the heart of it, we don't know what is causing this disparity. We don't know what's causing the disproportionality. But we know that if some of these offenses, we don't necessarily need to push these kids deeper into the system, we need to maybe look at something different. And that was a school-based referral program. So, when we came back, we looked at our numbers locally. And we, I pulled all of the arrest data for 17 and under, and we separated them into two different categories. One was 16- and 17-year-old kids, and one was 15 and under. We looked at them in terms of race, gender, age, the location of the offense, crime type, who the victim was. We also looked at who notified the police. There was a notion out there that some of this disparity could be caused by the police. In fact, as we drive down the street, we pay attention to youth of color and maybe not necessarily white kids. We also looked at identifying them with a unique identifier to protect the kids' data. But then, we also wanted to be able to show that if one particular youth is being arrested 15, 20 times, that they don't get counted as 15 or 20 different minority kids within the system. And what our local numbers showed was the LPS data, oh, excuse me, let me back up. We actually went with just school offenses. So, we tried to limit the different variables out there. So, we isolated that to just crimes that are occurring at Lincoln Public Schools. LPS data shows that the minority youth population is roughly 32%. However, the youth, when we looked at arrests, 48.6% of youth 15 and under are minority youth. So, there is a disproportionality there, but we don't know exactly why. So, when we delve into the numbers, we looked at focusing a program that was going to impact the 14- and 15-year-old kids that we're seeing that are a disproportionate rate representative of the arrest data in the schools. And then, we also had to look at what offenses we were going to tolerate for a school-based referral program. Certainly, there are some offenses that you don't want to do, diversion or a, I call it a stop class for kids in the school for offenses. And we settled on assaults and disturbances. However, assault sometimes takes a broad scope. So, we wanted to make sure that we're not referring kids, or not referring kids to this program if it's a sexual assault, if it's a domestic-related assault, or if it has some type of nexus to gang activity as well. From there, we established a program that, when we pull all of the arrests, let's say, for example, we get called to the school, and we document it just like we would any other offense. We then take that report, and all of those reports that impact juveniles go down to family crimes. It's a component of our Team Three Criminal Investigations at the Police Department. From there, we have one person that looks at these offenses. And if it's an offense that is a low-grade assault, or if it's a disturbance and it happened at a school, and it deals with 14- and 15-year-old youth, those are packaged separately and sent up to the County Attorney's Office. For us, our main component, then, is identifying whether it's an eligible offense. And then, it goes on to Alicia Henderson's office, where she determines whether it's an eligible offender. You want to go into that?
Sure. If I could just take a few minutes just to do a little bit of background also of what our juvenile division does, so that you know sort of where this fits in the entire pie, that is, the juvenile division in the County Attorney's Office. There are three, we call it three slices to the jurisdiction in the juvenile court. And the first is abuse and neglect. And you will hear us refer to those as 3A cases, because that's the part of the statute that we file the cases under. And those are the cases that get lots of press, where kids are removed from their homes because their parents have been using drugs, or beating them, or sexually abusing them, or what other, all the other horrible things that can happen to children. Eventually, some of those cases work out well, and the kids get to go back home. Sometimes, those cases don't work out so well, and parental rights have to be terminated. And we handle all of that. Those cases can go on for years at a time. And those are the kids now who become wards of the state. There's also another slice of the pie, which is truancy and ungovernable kids. And that's 3B jurisdiction, because that's the other part of the statute. Those are kids who are runaways, who won't abide by reasonable parental rules, and obviously, truancy, you know what that is, being truant from school. Now, these youth no longer are wards of the state. They were years ago, but now, relatively recently, that changed. Those youth can only be placed on probation, so they can become probationers. In addition to having those cases go through court, our office has also worked on another collaborative with, we have three truancy courts. Three of them are in three of the high schools. So, Northeast, North Star, and Lincoln High have truancy court programs. And also, three middle schools. So, Goodrich, Color, and Park Schools also have truancy diversion programs. And those are ones where we think that the youth will be successful without having to go to court and actually be placed on probation, trying to save some of the probation resources for the kids who are a little bit more difficult. So, those get sliced off. Then, the other, the third portion of juvenile court jurisdiction are the law violators. And that's really what we're talking about when we're talking about Project Success, is we have youth who would have committed law violations and normally would be handled in the normal way. So, what is the normal way? If a youth commits a felony, all of those law violations come to the County Attorney's Office for handling. There is no city attorney involvement in felony cases. For 16- and 17-year-olds, those are, if they are city misdemeanor violations, those are prosecuted or handled by the City Attorney's Office, okay? And my office also then handles youth who are 15 and below for misdemeanors as well. So, you can see there's a slice of the law violation pie that goes to the City Attorney's Office. And they do, you know, the 16- and 17-year-old city misdemeanors, we handle all of the rest of the cases. Both the County Attorney and the City Attorney's Offices have a diversion program that's available, a normal diversion program where a youth is allowed to go there and not have their case go to court. So, Project Success is a little bit different than the usual diversion program because it's a little, it's faster, and it gets intensive services immediately to the family. So, and the other thing is, both of our offices, City Attorney and County Attorney's Office, also have what's called intensive diversion. So, if you were a youth who was 13-years-old, and you shoplifted, and you went to the diversion program, and you come back and you're 16-years-old, and you, you know, I don't know, hit some mailboxes in town or whatever, so commit a criminal mischief, that youth, instead of having to go to court, now has the opportunity to have a second chance at diversion or an intensive diversion opportunity. So, now, Project Success, as Captain Stilly said, are for 14- and 15-year-olds. And part of that was because that's where we saw the disparity. But also, it's something that my office handles. And so, I can, our office can make the decision about whether these youth go to Project Success or not. Now, you can imagine, because we have abuse and neglect jurisdiction and truancy diversion, or truancy jurisdiction and law violation jurisdiction, that sometimes we'll get a kid who comes to us from Project Success, who we knew as a youth who had experienced abuse or neglect, or a youth who we knew had experienced problems with truancy, as well as now this law violation. So, we have a great deal of experience with the youth, with some of them who come in. I remember, actually, probably about the second week we were doing this program, a girl, her case came across my desk, and I said, "Oh, yes." I won't say her name out loud. I'll say Jane. "Oh, yes, Jane. She wasn't, she didn't have such a good, you know, experience with truancy program, but, you know, maybe she'll successfully complete this Project Success." She actually did. So, that's kind of interesting. But anyway. A couple other things that we do, just so you know from our office's point of view. We have smart team meetings at every high school once a month, and most of the middle schools once a month, where I go out, probation goes out to the school. And we are trying to coordinate and discuss with the school officials, kids who are on probation, kids who are experiencing truancy, and also kids who they may suspect are abused or neglected. That's something that my office participates in as well. And also, there's another thing, and I'll be done here in a minute. There's crossover youth is an initiative that has been started between HHS and probation, as well as my office and also the City Attorney's Office is involved in that. Where kids who are on the abuse and neglect docket and have a law violation, that we can get HHS and probation and the prosecutor's offices sort of all on the same page about how to handle that case. So, those are the kinds of collaboratives we're involved in. And obviously, then, Project Success is something that has come out of some of those collaboratives as well. Becky, you want to explain how it works?
I will. I actually have two handouts for you guys. One is an overview of just the program, and one is a flow chart. So, my office, we currently employ the case manager that does the day-to-day work with the youth that are coming over from Alicia for Project Success. So, like Jason and Alicia said, we serve just the 14- and 15-year-olds in the LPS high schools, along with Bryan and Yankee Hill also. So, once Alicia gets those cases and determines that they're eligible, within a day, she brings those referrals over to us. And Laura, who is our case manager, receives those referrals. And she is contacting those families immediately. So, once we get those referrals, we have families in our office anywhere from two to three days after we get that referral. And so, once she has the youth in the family, she does what we call the NYS, which is the Nebraska Youth Screen. And that is an assessment that Laura does, where she kind of looks into all the dynamics of the family. So, if there's anything going on regarding mental health, school, you know, anything, any dynamics that's going on with the family, we catch that in that Nebraska Youth Screen. And so, she uses that screen to develop their diversion plan. And so, that diversion plan is very specific to if they got in an assault or if it was disturbing the peace. And so, she meets with the kids approximately four times within a 60-day period. So, the first meeting is that Nebraska Youth Screen. And then, that second and third meeting is really to go over their diversion plan with them and see successes that they're having with it, if they're having challenges. How can she be best assistance to the youth and the family? Part of that diversion plan, some of the typical things that we do, if it is an assault, we refer them onto the mediation center, where they do the victim and the offender mediation. And so, with that, we also get recommendations from the mediation center on how the youth and the victim can kind of repair what had been done and how they can move forward and learn from that lesson. Some of the other things that we do is community service. We do apology letters and providing restitution if that need be. So, the goal of our program is really to prevent the youth from coming any farther into the juvenile justice system. And so, we do that with the youth and the family on what did they learn? If they are, you know, presented with this situation in the future, how can they move past that? How can they make smart decisions so they don't end up farther into that juvenile justice system? And so, within 60 days, we're hoping that they complete that diversion plan. And if so, then we will close that case, and that ticket will not be on that juvenile's record. If they don't, within that 60-day period, if they're having, if they haven't complied with anything, then we send that referral back through the County Attorney's Office, and then Alicia can decide how she wants to proceed with that. So...
One thing, if I could just throw a few things in there. When you do the victim-offender mediation, if the victim doesn't want to participate in that, then there's the ability to have a surrogate person who's acting as, in the role of the victim in that mediation process. And some of our victims, sometimes they are more of a mutual situation. So, we'll have somebody who's a victim in part of the case and an offender on the other part of the case. So, that's been sort of an interesting dynamic as well. And also, you know, a teacher could have been the victim of the disturbance, or an administrator, or it could be the victim of an assault. And, you know, sometimes those teachers are, may have a hard time with, you know, being in this situation. But it's been kind of fascinating as a result of this mediation session. You want to tell us a little bit more about some of that, or how the school's looking at it, Tanner?
Sure, well, I apologize for retarding this. I'm here representing Lincoln High and actually Bryan High School for next year. Just a couple things from a school perspective.
This is Tanner Penrod, sorry.
I probably didn't mean myself. Tanner Penrod, I'll be principal at Bryan. I was AP at Lincoln High up until this best school year. Just talk on a couple fronts. I'll start with the victim, because we were starting there. Something that we like as a school is just the professional help with mediation, especially giving voice enclosure to a victim. We don't have a lot of training and skill set and capacity at the school level to have a lot of those conversations. We can try, but they've been met with minimal results, minimal success in the past. So, having professional mediators, having an outside source come in to help with those conversations has been helpful. One example I'm going to speak to is just one of our administrators was a victim of disturbing the peace. And the fear she had, and the fear her family had as a result of that disturbance was profound. And she was very disturbed for quite some time. A couple, two, three weeks later, she had the opportunity to sit down with the mediator and the student and reach closure. And she was able to come to work in a fashion where she wasn't concerned anymore. So, just seeing the impact the disturbance had on her, but then seeing the end result where there was some closure for her, screams loudly to me that it wasn't a good thing for her and the student in this setting. It also provides a voice for the student-victims also. And I think that's important, because I think they oftentimes get forgotten. When one student's punished, what happens to rebuild the victim? And I like the fact that Project Success allows for the victims to have a voice and gives them an opportunity to have some closure in their life. Negative impacts on the school is very minimal. It's a simple email. It's a phone call from Laura. We get them connected with some student information. And after that, we're really, we're hands-off. So, the fact that we have very fast and intensive services for an at-risk population that doesn't come out of our budget and doesn't take us time is obviously something we're going to be in favor of. So, again, the very fast, very intensive services that are personalized for the student has been well-received on our front. We've got a whole lot of students who are at risk and a minimal amount of resources. So, having these experts come in to work with some of our high-risk students has been, has been positive. We know that probation is overworked, and it feels like they're understaffed. So, a chance to take a student and give them a second chance outside of the probation system is also a positive that we have been advocating for and will continue to advocate for. In the short term, we haven't seen, at least the students I've worked with, we haven't seen a student who has reoffended. Obviously, we're talking about a very small window at this point. And I'm anxious to see, you know, the next four or five years, do the students stay outside of the system? So, that's something I'll be looking for going forward.
Actually, that's a probably pretty good segue to you, Jason, for the evaluation.
It is. We definitely don't want to rest on our laurels, and there are some areas that we can certainly improve upon. To give you an idea of how many people went through Project Success, 47 referrals were made to Project Success in the roughly seven months that the project was going on. 47% of those were minority youth, and 66% of those were male. The majority of the referrals were generated from Lincoln High. They were at 30%. And Northeast High, that was at 36%. 28 youth were referred to Project Success, were eligible for acceptance into the program. 27 chose to participate in the program in lieu of the standard juvenile justice system. Assault offenses, they represented 55%, so the remainder, 45%, were disturbing the peace citations, or referrals, if you will. 62% of the offenses by minorities reported out of the schools to us were eligible. And one of the things that I would like to point out is in our evaluation of this program, when we initially pulled the numbers for, I believe it was the 2014 school year, 2013, 2014 school year, again, if I can remind you, we went from 17 years of age down. And the two groups, the first stack was 16- and 17-year-olds, it was about an inch thick that we had to go through. 15-year-olds and under, that was a lot smaller. However, when we really dug into it, the majority of those citations for 16- and 17-year-old kids were for traffic offenses. So, they wouldn't be the assaults and the disturbing the pieces. And in fact, when we looked at the numbers removing those traffic offenses, the real concern was kids in middle school. So, we are looking to expand the program to incorporate the middle schools, hopefully getting to those kids at a younger age. And we're also looking at the recidivism rate going forward.
We're actually having the project evaluated, and we're, I don't think the ink is dry yet on the evaluation. But that is a tentative recommendation from our evaluators to include more people in this. And I think one of the reasons for that is that they, some kids are not eligible because they've already gone to court. So, they've already had a law violation that has been in court, and they're not eligible then for this program. So, perhaps if we move that, the program down to younger youth, we might be able to make an impact that would then keep those kids from moving through court. Another thing that you should note is, what if a youth does reoffend? Well, there, this is, if they successfully complete Project Success, they have no arrest on their record. It is not there. It's not, it's not, it's not even considered a referral in the Lincoln Police Department's Records Division, okay? And if they have another offense, then they would still be eligible for our regular diversion program. So, this is really kind of a pre-diversion program, as you might call it, for those specific offenses that happen in the school setting that are obviously disruptive of the school setting, as well as disruptive of the victim who's been victimized in the case. I think that's about all we have. You have any questions?
Couple. So, if, let's say... Couple. So if, let's say I have a son who's fourteen, which I do.
All right.
And let's say he's going to East High, and he gets into a fight and is accused of an assault. What's the process? Now, if my, right, if he's at East High, he's not going to be, this program's not going on there, is that right?
No, it's going on at all of the high schools, and as well as Yankee Hill, which is a, an alternative school, and also Bryan.
Okay. So this, this happens, what do I expect as a parent? What's going to happen, and what order? Who's, who's going to contact me first, and what are they going to say to me? That kind of stuff.
You're first.
And these are, these can be a variety of different scenarios. However, you're either going to get contacted by a school resource officer, or you're going to get contacted by a regular police officer, you know, if it's reported at your house. And we're going to take the initial report. By design, we didn't want any of the officers to know about Project Success because what we wanted to avoid is people saying, "I normally would handle it in this manner, but because we have this Project Success out here, I'm going to write it and try to get you pushed into that system."
We didn't want to widen the net, in other words, of people who are getting caught up into the system.
So, once we take the initial report and we document it as such, that we push it off, that report goes to Alicia's office.
And it actually, Karen Hates, who's the person who handles all the referrals, gets it. Once it hits her desk, then she's upstairs handing it to me. And we have a procedure in our office where it's, you know, somebody knows this has to go out right away. I look, see whether or not, I read the police report, see whether or not it's an eligible offense, and see whether or not the youth is eligible for it. And then I, I call it part of my diet and exercise plan. I then take and walk it down over here to the, to the Human Services Office. So it is, it is just like that. You know, really, there's hardly anything else that goes that fast in the world of law violations. So the first contact that you would have as father would be the referral. You would know that your child's getting a referral. And then probably about four days later, you'd get a call from Laura Sewer. And then she would explain the program to you.
Did you have a question to me?
Like, I guess my question is, it seems to me, before this program was in place, wouldn't the principal have just sat the two down and, in the principal's office and probably gave each one of them a hefty amount of detention after school?
Yes.
Yes.
And the school consequences are going to be separated from anything that happens on a legal front. So suspension and make-up time detention, some mediation within the school building is still going to happen. But Project Success is just going to be addressing the legal components, and they'll provide services for that aspect.
Before this, law enforcement, if they chose to, or if the administration chose to have, to involve a school resource officer, then those would come to us as, you know, you, you think of them as a ticket, but they're really, they're called referrals. So they would still come to, over to our office as a referral for regular handling.
Alicia, you gave one anecdotal story. Can you give us some other examples of, of how this has played out?
Well, you know, we kind of need Laura here a little bit more to tell us the, to tell us the actual stories. I know that she has shared with me that there was a youth who came through, who was the offender when they came through the program. And Laura explained that was, she was having a hard time working with this young man because he, you know, he thought that as long as the other person hit him first, that he could just go after that guy, right? So he was, he was thinking of, you know, it, it, he wasn't trying to get away. So she, he thought of that as self-defense, to, you know, hit back five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten times was self-defense. So Laura had a hard time working with him, tried to explain to him what that meant, et cetera. And, you know, and he completed the program. Well, then it, he comes back in as a victim. And he had, he had a real hard time apparently during the mediation session because he really just wanted to keep saying, "But I was just acting in self-defense. But I was just acting in self-defense." Well, then, when he came back in as a victim this time, somebody had offended against him, he actually was really participated well in the mediation and understood it. And she said just from, from that, being able to see it from the other side as well, that he really provided some perspective and even helped some, we'll call it sort of teaching, the other youth who was now on the offender's side of the table. So I thought that was kind of interesting.
And I guess another question for Tanner. So just drove by Bryan yesterday and thought, my goodness, that's, that's getting big. So what, what's happening at Bryan?
Oh, so that's, you're probably referencing 40th and South Street?
Yeah.
So that'll be, it's going to be the Nuremberg Center. It's a middle school behavior skills program.
Okay.
So we're at 48th and O Street, the old Hawthorne Building. So we're staying the same size.
All right. Okay, thanks.
You mentioned that this has been going on for about a seven-month period. Is, is the grant over? You're looking to renew it and focus on middle school? Can you tell us a little bit more about the plan that our grant went forward?
And then I'll always drag Sarah up here if she's still back there. We, we still have a grant, so we're going to, it's going to continue for at least one more year. Sarah, is it going to be longer than that, or what's our funding?
So the grant that it's under is a step-down grant, so that means it's funded two years at a hundred percent, and then each year thereafter, it steps down by twenty-five percent. However, with that in mind, we also have additional money coming in from the state under community aid dollars. So the plan is to start supplementing that twenty-five percent step-down with community aid. So we hope it stays around for a long time, because the comments we're getting from parents have been very positive.
And Captain Stilly, I know from meeting with the department on the gang, the task force update, that middle school is where you're trying to target gang prevention efforts. So do you see this as very closely related to that work, or can you speak to that issue a little bit? I'm outreach coordinator here, but...
I do. I think I was a little surprised initially by the numbers. I would assume, just without getting into the weeds on those, those statistics, that we would be seeing more assaults and disturbances in high schools, where in fact, it was, it was flipped, and it was in the middle school. I think that's an important age range that we can do a lot of impact in the middle schools.
You had mentioned that it started out with forty-seven referrals, but the program is relatively young, only seven months. Have any one of the, so how many of those forty-seven successfully completed the program? And then, I guess, how many of those forty-seven went the normal course of disposition of their law violation? And then, how many of those forty-seven recidivated?
Do we have all those in the...
I can answer, I can answer the recidivism numbers, and keep in mind that forty-seven is a very small end.
Yeah.
And so we're looking at thirteen percent, but that accounts for three youth.
Three.
So I think time will tell, and, and a larger, a larger number will be able to do a little bit more analysis on that.
And then those three, though, they would not be re-eligible for going through the, like, the second shot at, at this program? They'd have to go the normal course of disposition, okay?
So diversion would still be eligible for them as long as their offense was eligible?
Great. Well, thank you for joining us today. This sounds like really important work. Appreciate your time.
Thanks. Good to see you again. So you leave them the alma mater. Pardon me?